Meeting called automatic. Please call the road.
Councilwoman Perkins Segusti, Councilman Cuesta.
Here.
Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Surenia.
Councilman Maza.
Yeah.
President.
Yes, seven members present at court. This is a special meeting of the City Council for purposes of discussing the 2014 fiscal year in this sewer utility capital budget and for considering the authorization for the proper city officials to keep a memorandum of agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey and City of Elizabeth concerning the Goffles Bridge replacement project, the master utility agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, City of Elizabeth, and E-Town Services, and master utility agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, the City of Elizabeth and New Jersey American Water Company, AKA Liberty Water Company. None of this special meeting was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board of September 25, 2013, and a copy of that notice was sent to the Star Ledger, an only tribute to the provides with the provision of the open public reading law of New Jersey. I'm publicly speaking. Any resident or taxpayer here, like the dress city council, or any matter, please step forward. And regards of the budget, please step forward and take the name and address for the record. Once again, any resident or taxpayer, like the dress city council on the budget, proposed budget, please step forward, state the name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will just push on the meeting. New business?
Authorized proper city officials to execute the memorandum of agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey and City of Elizabeth concerning the Goffles Bridge replacement project, authorized proper city officials to execute the master utility agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, City of Elizabeth and E-Town Services, authorize the proper city officials to execute the master utility agreement between the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, City of Elizabeth and New Jersey American Water Company, also known as Liberty Water Company.
Do you have to read out the resolution?
Mr. President, if I may, at the last pre-council meeting we had, I asked that this resolution be held. You know, we were optimistic that the administration was going to reach some understanding with the Port Authority, and I think that has not been achieved as of yet. So I'm going to ask that we continue to table this matter until further discussion.
I have a motion on the floor for a table.
I would second the motion.
It was seconded by Councilman Grover, seconded by Councilman Torres Gonzalez.
And we all.
I'd be very much.
Yeah, I just want to add, I mean, I'm particularly concerned given that it's running in the second ward, you know exactly what they're going to plan to do and how the city can certainly benefit as a result of that.
Well, certainly I concur with that. Go ahead, Councilman Maza.
Mr. President, can you have a Councilman Grove explain what is that we did not achieve with the Port Authority?
Sure.
Can we do that off the record?
I'm sorry, yeah, because I said motion to the table, I'm not sure if we usually have discussion on motion to the table, so.
We can talk about it, but not now that.
All right, but not right now.
Whatever is up.
I got no vote on it.
Yeah, I would go vote. There's been a motion, there's a second, you had to vote on it.
Yeah, right, that's what I was going to tell Council, I thought you wanted to make some comments about it, but not, ask a question about it.
No, no, no.
I've got my Councilman Maza, I'll make that clear. So, motion had been made by Councilman Grover and seconded by Councilman Torres Gonzalez and also Councilman Cuesta. Have a vote, a motion, I mean, a vote call.
Councilman Cuesta.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President.
Aye, seven ayes. This has been tabled.
Okay, now the discussion.
Just a point of interest.
What are your points?
Elon, can you let me know, we passed a first reading, I believe, an ordinance regarding access to the Goffles Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
That was an ordinance, correct?
I believe so, yes.
It was a first reading?
To the approaches.
Okay, that could technically be tabled at the next general meeting, correct?
Yes.
It gives your office a little more work, but, okay.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, discussion and votes.
We're on the budget now?
What about the other two items?
They should read them all.
I read all three.
She read all of them.
It was tabled, that's it, as a group.
Point of interest.
So, we tabled the first item or all three?
All three.
All three, fine, all three.
Tabled all three?
Yeah, I tabled them in.
Tabled all three.
We tabled all three.
That was what I, that's what was read, and I moved to table all three.
Right.
Okay.
You seconded it.
I know, but I thought it was talking just about item number one.
No, no.
Usually that's how we do it, but I just, I wanted to make sure. If it's tabled, it's tabled.
Yes, Mr. President. She read all three.
No, I understand that.
And that's what we tabled, I was on this question, that all three.
I was on the impression that only the first one.
Do you want to just clarify?
Aye.
Another motion.
Mr. President?
Just wanted to make sure.
You want to resent the vote?
Wait a minute, Council, I want to make sure we get this clear first. Are we clear now, we doing all, we did all three?
Did everybody vote to table all three, or did they just vote to table one? Yeah.
All three?
All three.
That's consistent, okay, good. So we don't have to discuss it more?
No.
Done. Now, Councilman.
I just, I thought that was the case, I was in favor of tabling all three, I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Right, that is what I was understanding also, but seemed like some of our colleagues put some, so now we got to clear that with the all three.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, now we just go to the budget.
On the budget, Mr. President, if I just may say a couple things.
Correct.
I just have a couple questions. Tony, can you get for us, please, what has been the revenue in our municipal court compared for 2013 budget, or 2012 budget year, I guess, compared to the previous year? And then the second question I have is this, for those who've been on council for a little while, you will recall that one of the things that I kept pushing for for a few years and we finally got it done was to hire sanitary inspectors.
Yes.
And we, as a result, had Aldo Parati and Febo Torres out there giving tickets to property owners who put out the garbage on the wrong day. As a result, city, I think, got a little cleaner as a result of that, and we also made some revenue as a result of that, and if I remember last year, Tony, the revenue that was created by those two individuals was probably double of their salaries. So we made enough to cover their salaries plus enough to pay probably the two more inspectors. Mr. Parati, as everyone knows, passed away about a year and a half ago. We've never replaced him. And so we have, right now, Febo Torres by himself giving out tickets for violations of the sanitary code. I'd like to know what has been the drop in the, because if you only got one guy giving out tickets for the whole city, I have to believe we're not making as much, I mean, he's in court, I mean, I know it's not his fault, it's just, I think we need more guys doing that. And then the second question I have, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I just had a couple things. Second question I have is, last year, I asked the question of where are we at with enforcement of our recycling code? And how did we do with our tonnage report? I'd like to know what the results were of, again, 2012 compared to previous year, 2011. And how many?
Start on 2013 versus 2012, last two years.
Last two years. And what has been the revenue? I mean, I don't particularly see any difference in a lot of these buildings when it comes to enforcement of the recycling. And I know last year, Director Petty indicated that Mr. Bella was going to be out there, and they had a procedure, they were going to go after big buildings first, and then the four families, and then maybe down to the two families, but I really haven't seen any difference at all, how riding around these multifamily buildings, I don't see any recycling buckets out of the curb when it's recycling day. So I'd like to know what, if anything's been done, and has there been any revenue? I mean, if they're not in compliance, there's supposed to be something. So I just, I think that in this tough time of economy, and, you know, municipality's best friend is to raise taxes on it, but I think we can raise revenue by going after those that violate.
Yes.
Codes.
Sure.
And not have to raise taxes. And I think that garbage at the wrong day and not recycling is really a problem, and it hurts us two ways, because we end up spending more money on the tonnage that our contractor picks up every week, and at the same time, we're getting no revenue from the recycling tonnage that we can get credits for through the state and everything else. So those are the questions I have, Mr. President. If anybody else has anything else, that, to me, is very important.
Just letting you know that the first one on was Aldo. Aldo, I did question Mr. Petty about that myself a while back, about having two, but he got one. But anyway, for the replacement, what they did, they bumped up Febo up to the number one spot, I guess they had one and two, so to speak. So Febo has been, since the loss of Aldo, Febo had been bumped up to number one, but we're still missing.
We don't have number two.
We still, yeah, we still need to replace that. So that's, I believe they's going to try to replace that person in my conversation with them, so.
It's the revenue made.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, and I agree with that. So I can cover what you said about the person that's, we need him, another person out there with Febo to help them issue those services and to people that are violating the code for putting out garbage on the wrong day. Because I know when we first had this conversation way back when, you and I, it was the right thing to do, and so we need that other person out there to help them out. Okay. Yeah, so, yes.
Yeah, I think what we normally do is just go over a budget overview and go through various items, and then we can have the questions.
Okay.
Specific questions regarding the budget. First of all, I just want to go, number one, just go through the budget process, number two, go through the municipal budget, three, go through the user-friendly budget, which is now attached to the municipal budget, and four, I go over the sewer utility budget. For some of the council people, the budget process, we start in April. May, we have all the directors sit down with our budget supervisor, Louis Poubelle, and administration, and they go through each line item of the operating budget, okay? That's finally approved by the administration. We present the tax bills in June, have that approved and then adopted, so we can get the bills out for August and November. We introduce the budget, this past year was September 10, okay, and the planned budget adoption will be on November 12. Okay, that's the budget process. As far as the municipal budget's concerned, going forward for 2014, looking at a budget that again's within all the caps, the tax levy cap, appropriation cap, we've had no layoffs or furloughs again, and we've continued to maintain that services, although they could be improved upon, as Councilman Grove maintains. The budget bills, again, went out, that reflect a 7% increase for the year, actually the average homeowner, to every homeowner. That's broken down by 4% attributed to the city and 3% attributed to the Board of Ed. Again, the Board of Ed, it's unthinkable, they could increase the $4 million tax levy to the taxpayers of the city within the last couple of years, they've had a $90 million increase in their annual budget, and as best I can tell, we have a $15 million surplus. And to come up with a 7.5% tax levy increase is unconscionable. As far as the 4% increase for the city, we just have to recall that most of it's all mandated increases for the hospital, pensions, and debt service and salary contracts. And also, in the last couple of years, we've had a huge decrease in the UEZ, as offered by the governor and his line item veto, cutting out the UEZ funds.
Tony, could I, I'd like to recognize the Councilwoman Grove, just a question.
Thank you.
Yeah, so of the city, 4% increase, most of it is non-controllable, again, due to hospitalization, pensions, salary contracts, and also the line item veto by the governor of the UEZ funds, which hurt us immensely, over a million dollars, as far as the reduction in salaries. Some of these offsets have, these appropriations have been offset by some revenue increases, and again, we have to thank the administration and council itself for approving and adopting over the years the hotel tax, parking tax, motor vehicle tax, they've helped dramatically to offset some of the expenses, and they tap into some lower visitors to the city, especially from the airport and hotel visitors, et cetera. The collection rate for the revenue continues at 6%, which is average good for a city of an urban community, and that's been our average in the ballpark for the last few years. What I want to discuss now is, at the back of your budget, we now have, the state is mandated, again.
Tony, how much we raised due to the county increase? Did I mention that?
Yeah, it was a rather small, I would say a $75 per quarter increase, probably around maybe five to 10 bucks. The Board of Ed is about 35, and the city is around the same, so city's slightly more than Board of Ed's, but the counties hasn't been that dramatic unless you're into it.
Mr. President? Quick question on the.
Sure. Any council?
Yeah, quick question on the, on the 4% increase, is hospitalization and pension charges ex cap?
Part of, the medical is part of the ex cap.
Because if the city's got a 2% cap, if you're increasing by 4%, something, something is ex cap.
Oh, when you say, it's not ex cap, it's an exception to the tax levy.
Exception to it.
So in other words, there's a cap levy at the 2%, there's exceptions to the tax levy cap.
Hospitalization.
Which is the hospitalization, pensions, and debt service.
Debt service.
So these still all have to be paid, and they're really not controlled really by the city, except for debt service, debt services, you know, improvements to the city infrastructure and that type of thing, that's kind of needed also, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
What we have now is a mandated user-friendly budget section that's attached to your budget document, okay? This state fiscal year municipalities, the city being one, is the first to prepare this budget, though this user-friendly budget will be prepared by all the calendar years starting on next year. But this is the first go-around, and what we have here is 10 schedules that provide the data collection tool and, according to the state, meaningful display of information. I'm just going to do those real quickly, you can check them on your budget at a later, at a later date. The first schedule.
Right at the back, please.
Yeah, it's at the very end.
I don't know if it's the last one or not, I thought it was good, I liked it.
Yeah, at the very end, the schedule number one just gives you a summary of all the major revenue components, that includes the surplus, the local revenue, state aid, grants, unofficial items received from taxes, as well as the tax levy for the municipality and library. The second schedule calls for appropriations, and it lists down all the budget positions, full-time and part-time, and that's by the various units within the city. It also has a total dollar amount associated with a particular department. You know, for example, we have, in the administrative government, we have 184, in public safety, we have 692, public works, we have 80 full-time employees, and then right to the side of that, it lists down the total dollar amounts for a particular department. Okay.
Thank you.
Question. Schedule number three, that shows the structural imbalances. This year, we have enough surplus and enough revenues to cover all our expenditures. Going forward, within the next year, we'll be looking at possibly a decrease in personnel of 5% through attrition. We never had any layoffs or furloughs, we don't plan on it. Through attrition, in the retirement, will be looked at very carefully, and only essential positions will be mandated. We have to stay within the 2% cap, and personnel are not exceptions, they're a cap. Just by way of information, we have over 130 police and firemen with 25 to 30 years of service, and I just sent out yesterday an information schedule that would list down their medical contributions once the new contract starts, over a four-year period of time, and some of these contributions, I think, will be quite insane for a lot of people to retire. Going into the third and fourth year, and some of these public safety people will be paying over $10,000 in medical contributions, the cost of a family plan, right now is like $25,000, and in another 34 years, an 8% average increase, so you're looking at a 30-plus health plan cost to the city.
Council question.
Tony, but when you talk about attrition and retirement and people with X number of years, we're not saying that in the near future, the number of police officers will be reduced? Because that's the impression some people have, and they are questioning me?
Well, what I'm saying is that next year, we will have possibly a structural deficit, and if we do, if we can forecast that going to the 2015 budget, we have to stay within a 2% cap.
Right.
And whatever personnel retire, again, it could be public safety, it could be public works, but there will be some combination to make up for that structural deficit and maintain the cap. I mean, it's as simple as that. Again, we haven't had any layoffs and furloughs. You look at other towns, Trenton, Camden, Passaic, Jersey City, they've all laid off.
But Tony, that's commendable, I commend the administration, you and the administration for the work you have done, but my, I guess the answer to my question is yes.
Possible, it's very possible, unless we get some kind of a cash infusion of revenue.
That's amazing, sir. Definitely amazing, sir.
It's about to happen, where the staffing of the cities, I'm looking at a 5% reduction ballpark number, just to stay within the cap, so it might happen.
That's the cost of work, 5% cost of work.
Yeah, I'm thinking, but again, most of the big bucks are in the public safety area, and those are most of the people that are going to be contributing.
To the health issue.
Huge amount.
But that is, that is an issue that essentially we will be addressing head-on next year.
Yeah.
In other words, you're anticipating that this may happen, but it's not going to happen now?
No, it's not happening in the 2014 budget.
Right, okay.
Again, we look forward, prepare a multi-year budget, just to see where the weak spots are. This is a possibility, and again, with the police and fire, retirement eligibility is 25 to 30 years, 130 of them, that's.
No, I understand.
Okay, I think.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
How would this, if you said we might, it's a possibility of a have a decrease in personnel? Why would it be a decrease if we're going to increase the sewer tax? If we do that?
No, sewer tax is totally independent, it's a separate fund, it operates on its own, it's not liquidating, it has nothing to do with the personnel in the city.
Revenue, right.
No, no.
Municipal budget.
No, any revenue that would be generated from sewer rate increase or a settlement increase will remain in the sewer utility. I'll go over that pretty soon, and it's.
Just, I just want to echo Thompson and Costa's concerns, you know, we cannot afford to lose even half of the number of fired policemen that are loaded here. I mean, our table in both departments are low, and it's just impossible for us to see losing even half that number. I'm hoping, and I haven't heard anything about the cops grant, have we heard anything about that and possibly being able to?
No, you haven't heard anything about, and the cops, you know, the cops grant in all reality, the last time we had maybe 15, and that only lasts for like three years, at the end of three years.
Right.
You're going to have to pay for them anyway, it's like, you know, three-year reprieve, and that's.
Right.
And we had 15 last time, I doubt we're going to get.
Yeah, no, this last one was for like 16 officers.
Yes, 15 to 17, and a couple up came.
But it would still be good if we're anticipating the loss of.
Well, the directors have all been alerted, police, fire, the administration, this is what I foresee, you know, in the future years, and again, it's all within a cap, it's the governor's cap, it was endorsed by some of the Democrats, Reagan and everything, they knocked it down to, you know, 2%, and this is what we have to live with. But the game plan to make it easy on our employees is through attrition. We don't want to just have any layoffs and just, oh, people are not here anymore, we're going to do it on a humanitarian level basis.
Councilwoman, you finished, I want to get, Councilwoman, did you finish?
Yes.
I, Councilwoman, again, Councilman Maza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm on the same vein as Councilman Cuesta and Councilman Gonzalez, if we lose 130 through attrition, police and fire, there's no way the city can out?
Well, it's not going to be 130, I'm just saying that, those are, no one's eligible.
It's safe if it's 40 and 40, I mean, there has to be some way where we have to hire more police and fire, I mean, why do you think the city has been so safe, and, you know, the fires and people feel semi-protected because of our, you know, police and fire? And if they get dwindled down to, right now, both of the TAs are so low that they, you know, we're stretching our manpower, we're stretching the manpower, and I can't see them as losing another 30 or 40 police or fire, 50, even 50, I mean, I don't know how we're going to keep our city safe.
We all agree, we all live here.
And also, I don't know, we talked about the budget in terms of Obamacare and the healthcare.
No, we didn't discuss that.
Okay, because I'm looking at how many part-time employees we have, and it's a lot, and some of them have already been stopped, I mean, saying, you know, what is going to happen, you know, I'm working 35 or 40 hours, and I've been doing this for 20 years, and 15 years, and 12 years, now I'm hearing that my hours are going to be reduced because of the need for insurance. So they have to take a look at, you know, either adding those people on to some type of insurance, or what, you know, what is going to happen to all those part-time workers? We right here, public works alone, I mean, in recreation, you have 270, that's a lot of people that's going to be affected.
That's seasonal, and.
I mean, not only seasonal, but it's still recreational, I have people year-round that work more than 30 hours.
No, we all agree, I think, but it's, again, we have to live within the 2% mandated state cap. The only way to change that is through, you know, legislation, and I don't see that happening. You know, it's just not a public outcry for increased taxes.
They don't understand, I don't think they understand that the cap directly affects the type of service that they do, they're not equating it with the two. And like Councilman Keenan said, you know, if you have done Yomen's job, I don't, I don't never want to be compared with Jersey City or Camden, I'm sorry, Jersey City or Camden, or any of those other cities who have been in fiscal distress for years, that's not our plight, and it depends on you and, you know, your staff, but something has to be, something has to be.
You finish, Council?
Counsel Mazz.
Yeah, Mr. President, Tony, we're talking about two percent cap on the total budget of all the table of organization that we have. If you, let's say--
Two percent the tax rate on revenue.
We cannot, definitely, we cannot decimate the table of organization from our police department, our fire department, even public works department. A few minutes ago, we were talking about might be heading another position or two position or even more, so we could enforce and be able to do a better job with the recycle department to bring revenue to the city. And now here we go, you know, just because of number of people we need to replace, or we need to work with mutual rates. I mean, you know, the city of Elizabeth goes all over and gets a fire, even all the way down to seaside or whatever, to New York City, et cetera. We go have people, we should spec and take advantage of, you know, have other people coming up, the city of Elizabeth, but the safety and priority, you know, in our city is very important. Maybe we should look in different areas where the revenue could be able to generate, such as a reevaluation of the city, Tony, or go against illegal conversion of all the area, you know, in our city, and come up with a tax ratio that is, that is fit with the city of Elizabeth. It's been since nineteen seventy-six, that the last time, I think, our tax property was evaluated, right, Tony? Seventy-six? So, and, and the law mandated for every ten years or fifteen years, you're supposed to do so. You know, some of those politicians that we have heard in our group from Elizabeth, instead of fighting for crazy things in our community, they should be fighting to change and be able to empower this new cap that the governor and the rest of, you know, the Senate, they are somebody they'll all vote for. I mean, it's something that has to be really given a serious thought. You can't just downgrade our manpower that we have that has been doing such a great job, and, you know, I think Francisco hit him right on, you know, on the head, and we have to find other way to subsidize. And I think, maybe this will be the right time to start looking for reevaluation of our city property value and tax ratio that the county's giving us. Some people are paying high taxes in Elizabeth, some people, they don't pay the fair taxes. So, maybe that's what the administration should be focused on also, to see for the future, if you wanna save people, firemen, policemen, public works employee, et cetera, et cetera. That, Mr. President.
Okay, counsel. Counsel Mazz?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Counsel Mazz said. Couple of years ago, I'd asked the administration, and I never really got an answer. If we're not, if the administration's not comfortable reevaluating every single piece of property, can we look at, at least, reevaluating the multifamily dwellings that we have? We have, you know, properties that have a hundred units, two hundred units, and they're probably not paying, based on my experience, they're not paying a fair share compared to the one or two family homes. And that's something that I never got an answer. Can the city just reevaluate buildings that are, let's say, four families up or eight families up, and see, you know, what, what they're paying and what they should be paying? And I think you're going to find that buildings that are out there, first of all, most of the building owners don't live in town. It's, it's a business town. They're probably making decent money on rents that they're collecting, and I think that they should probably, somebody should look at their buildings, and if their buildings are assessed at a low, low market rate, then we should, you know, bring them up to code, all right? And then number two is, if you can find out for me, what is the current number of police officers we have, and what is our table of organization?
Yeah, it should have--
I don't have--
Oh, I don't, we don't have a table of organization.
What does it say?
I'm gonna read it.
Just, just police officers and--
Police officers only. Oh, oh, there are sergeants, lieutenants, and everything.
The entire department is three hundred and twenty-two. I think our table of organization's three sixty-five.
We're already down.
So, we're down forty-two?
Forty-three.
Forty-three here. Yeah, three twenty-two police and two twenty-nine fire.
Was this five in the bank?
In here.
What's the five?
Two twenty-nine.
Two twenty-nine.
I, I agree, we need to generate revenue because we can't lose more personnel.
Absolutely.
Just can't afford. I'm gonna go to the general salaries and benefits, go towards public safety, and it's well-needed. We have problems, as we were talking before, quality of life issues that are difficult to enforce with the noise and--
Literally.
And all these dirty things, and, and we can't imagine if we had less, it's just, we have to find other ways. Hopefully, you're hearing us still.
Reach out to the governor.
I think we go back to the concept I mentioned before, if we could, you know, the directors have to work on identifying titles that are gonna generate revenue, okay? You know, if it means hiring more recycle enforcement, sanitary guys, officers that are gonna go out and give tickets for people that are driving around with their friggin' radios blasting, or parties in their houses, or, that's the kind of positions that need to be filled, because they're gonna pay for themselves and maybe bring a profit--
Profit to the city.
--to the city. And we don't lose personnel, we're actually gaining personnel. I, I just, that's gotta be the focus of, of, of the administration, is to generate titles and jobs that are gonna generate revenue to the city. It's, I mean, we talk about fire and police, our public works department's, it's like skeletons.
Skeletons, yeah.
I mean, my ward foreman, and Councilman Torres' ward foreman, our guy sometimes is out there, him and one guy, for the whole, for two or three days out of the week. What, how are they gonna pick up stuff? It's just nine of men. It's possible.
It's amazing that the city, we're so big, like Elizabeth is the fourth largest city, we have less than twelve hundred employees.
So, we're-- Compared to other big cities, we're, I mean, they, they, they give their, their hundred percent, which we all appreciate, and I want that for the record. We appreciate our employees, but I think we can, we can generate revenue, bring some more guys, and make life a little easier for them.
I agree. Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel Mazz.
Many, not for anything. Ever since we had a meeting, the last time we touched about recycled, I want you to know for a fact that all Elizabeth High School building, the amount of the recycle is tremendous.
See, that's good.
And, and I mean, whether metal, cardboard, newspaper, everything else, so I think Pat Vella did a good job by reaching out to the Board of Ed, going after those people from the school, so we're on the right track by generating all the addition, and there's more eventually to be generating if you give my help. One guy, what can you do?
No, he's got two guys.
Got two guys, okay.
He's gotta go out there and do more. I agree, I mean, there, there's a perfect example.
It is, it works.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all the comments, and again, the purpose of a budget looking forward the next couple of years is to address the problems now, not 2015, when we have a budget and we have to talk about layoffs and furloughs and that kind of thing. So, we have time, and, you know, the thoughts are good, and we'll explore them as we go on. Uh, schedule number four, okay, that lists down all of the tax rates, average residential property taxpayer rates, and municipal Board of Ed and county allocations for the tax Schedule number five, that will list down all the assessed property valuations in the city, including exempt properties, it breaks it down by vacant land, residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, number of units, and total assessed dollars. Once again, I'd still like to point out, again, the, the tax-exempt property in the city is still fifty percent, so when we look at expenses and revenues going forward, I mean, that's one of the reasons that--
Counsel, I have--
Thank you. Yeah, I remember, I think last year, we talked about the tax-exempt property, especially being the county seat, and having a lot of the government of the county here, you get some type of, I don't know, was it a credit or something from the state?
Post, post fee, yeah.
Did we look into that?
Yeah, we looked into it twenty years ago, fifteen years ago. What they would normally come back and say is that they generate a lot of revenue for the city with their restaurants and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, the business.
Can we be visited that since we have this two percent cap?
Sure, sure. Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, that's been, you know, question of mine for a long time.
Can we access the law department, or can we visit the whole city? Like, we have the major regional hospital here, we have the county courthouses, I have all the county buildings.
Gonzalez, then Counsel Mazz.
Just wanted to highlight a point that Counsel Mazz mentioned before, that shows here almost sixty percent of the taxable properties are residential properties.
Okay. Yeah. Counsel Mazz?
I just wanted to piggyback on that, Counsel Warren Perkins-Gustafson. I've, I've learned that the township of Kennelworth is putting a lot of pressure on the county because they built that beautiful building on Galloping Hill Golf Course.
Yes.
Kennelworth is going to tax the county for that.
Right, doesn't it?
Okay?
But they have sense.
I always thought, because it was a county property, they didn't have to pay taxes, but guess what? The, the county is now going through a subdivision to subdivide the golf course, which is a public recreational green acres piece of land, away from the building, so that they only can, so they, they only pay taxes on the property where the building's located. So, if Kennelworth can tax the county for this building, why can't we tax the county for all the buildings that they have in our town? George, can we look into that? You can call Kennelworth, they, they're doing it.
Okay, we'll look into it.
They're definitely doing it. And I, I may be mistaken if it's Kennelworth Union, but--
It's Kennelworth, but it's my understanding that they haven't been able to do it yet, and it's gonna be litigated, but I'll look into it and I'll--
And listen, if they're successful, guess what?
Kind of set a precedent.
But, but the reality is, I can't see why this town council can't impose the resolution, but let's go to, let's go to war with it, but--
Sure.
They're definitely not gonna tear the buildings and build them somewhere else.
Nope.
So, whether they're gonna win or lose, either they're gonna pay us or they're not gonna pay us, but the buildings aren't going anywhere.
It's worth looking into. Absolutely. Counsel Mazz?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, many, not for anything, we don't wanna go to war again. I mean, you know, we gotta tax them, so they could tax us more, it's like burdening and raising our prices.
Then we'll get split up amongst the other eleven towns.
You're right, it makes sense that way.
And they're taking our land. They're not taking Westfield's land, they're taking our land.
Are the, the only hospital that we have in town, that's part of the exempt property that we have on the booklet there, Trinity House? But if I go to hospital, get a pill of aspirin, and they charge me ninety dollars, can we check in that we could actually assess that? I mean, if I'm gonna get after the county, I might as well go to the hospital.
Mr. President? Counsel Mazz, you finished?
Yes, that was--
Counsel McKenna?
On that point, Counsel Mazz, the Trinity House Hospital provides charity care with tens, tens of thousands of our residents.
Yep.
That's to decide about that, that's true.
They're not getting paid for that, so I, I think that the balance--
Balance, right.
Yeah, but I believe, I believe, and don't quote me on this, I believe once the Affordable Act, Health Act, kick in, I don't think you're gonna be any more charity care.
Right, you're gonna--
I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be bye-bye.
Bye.
That's what I read up on somewhere, and I read, I don't quote me on it.
We might actually get into the hospital.
Okay.
Yeah, just one other thing, tax-exempt property, those of you who have your schedule, Port Authority attributes close to fifty-four percent of the total tax-exempt property. They own like about thirty percent of the city property. So, and you know what we get from the Port Authority, right?
Argent.
Argent, right. Schedule number six, that lists down all of the tax abatements that we have in the city. There's close to a couple of dozen, twenty-five to thirty, and most of those are residential, low, moderate income type of housing projects. We only have a couple of large tax abatements, and that's IKEA and Danic. We have a couple of coming onboard, Elton, the weight firm, and, and there's a French outfit coming on, I can't think of name, right now, but compared to like Jersey City, Jersey City has like about three to four hundred tax abatements, and we can justify our commercial ones, and, but I think somewhere along the line, we have to start thinking serious about these residential tax abatements, holding them to minimum, because, you know, we're just in financial bind.
When you say residential, that's, that's not one or two family ones, those are the big ones.
No, this is a big, these are the big ones, no, no, the five-year residential.
That, that, that clue, too?
No, no, no.
Okay.
There's not many left hands.
No, no, they're going off--
I was gonna say, not many left, is it?
Yeah, they're going off, onto the tax hold.
So, you're gonna stop him in five years tax abatement?
No, no, still holding, but it's--
There's nobody having--
Nothing place to go. Let's see, schedule number seven, it gives you a, a list again of all of the full-time employees, according to the governing bodies, supervisory, police, fire, et cetera, and it gives you all their personnel costs. And as you can see, it's, along with the pension and health benefits, we're talking about a hundred forty-two million dollars. Schedule number eight, this breaks down the--
Eighty percent of--
Yeah, right.
Eighty percent of--
Oh, yeah. It's all personal mandated contracts, so. Schedule number eight, it lists down the health benefits, the detailed cost, and again, it listed down by a number of covered members, active and inactive. We have almost eleven hundred active employees with health benefits, and again, if you look at the cost of the average plan, family plan right now is twenty-five thousand. For an employee and spouse, twenty thousand, for a parent and child, fifteen, and for a single person, ten thousand. Again, the contribution levels over the next three, four, or five years, they're gonna range to, in some cases, thirty percent of a person's health contributions. To meet those contributions, and it's mostly gonna be inclusive plan, anybody over a hundred thousand, six-figure number, they're gonna be--
So, Tony gonna retire pretty soon with that figure?
He's not retiring, suppose?
No.
You're not retiring. Counsel McKenna?
On that, on that employee payment of the portion of the healthcare, that reduces the city's--
Yes, yes, we have, yes.
So, that's, that's kind of, it's unfortunate that the employees gotta pay.
Yes, that, as I've said, against the hospitalization expense. Let's see, we're looking at a million and two for this coming year, but as the police and fire start to build up over three or four years, it'll be five times that, six times, it's gonna be, you know, a good, it's gonna run out, and we'll leave. Come up with a tax levy and cap.
I just got a question for you. I don't know the answer to this, and I'm hoping I'm right. If this universal healthcare is supposed to kick in within the next couple of days--
Today?
Today.
Sign up.
Start signing up.
Good, good.
But the bottom line is, there's gonna be a lot more people now covered by insurance.
Yes.
Okay? So, I, I have to believe, just clear, clear numbers, that if there's more people paying their health benefits, I mean, their health costs, then insurance companies hopefully will reduce--
The rate.
The rate, I hope.
Hope.
So, I'm hoping that--
Wish for the--
God knows, the insurance companies don't become pigs and want just more profit.
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, schedule number nine, that lists down all the city debt, it breaks it down by bonds, principal and interest, and that gives you a net debt percentage over three hundred, average of property valuation, and so on. over three hundred, average of property valuation, and so on. It also lists down our bond rating, which is A1, again, the highest of all the urban And final schedule, number ten, that is just for schedule information purposes, only lists down the shared services that we have with, and between other towns. And it's to a minimum. Urban towns just don't have the capacity, you know, to deal with the shared service in a large degree. So I think it's really meant for smaller communities to join. Okay, that's the user-friendly budget. I want to shift over to the sewer utility. And if you look at the budget in the sewer utility, we're using five and a half million dollars of surplus for this year, 2014. Going to 2015, we have no surplus. We'll be operating, I project, on a deficit. I don't see any settlements in the works. We've been making many attempts to look at a settlement for sewer rates for our industrial customers, it's just not happening, we're filing motions, et cetera, but we have to go along, not anticipating any revenues from them at the present time. What I'm endorsing is a sewer rate increase to be introduced on November twelfth, fifteen percent. That would be effective on January first. If we don't have a sewer increase of fifteen percent now, and there is no settlement with the industrial customers come 2015, we're going to be operating at a deficit, and we're not going to have any cash, frankly, to pay bills going into next summer, bills being for the joint meeting, for debt service, and liberty of water to pay our billing to have to share. It's kind of urgent. Some of the expenses that we've incurred over the last couple of years, we've spent over twenty million just for sewer repairs over the last two years.
These are from the regular budget?
Yeah, it's from the regular, no, sewer budget.
No, the regular sewer budget, not bonded money.
Well, what happens? We spent over twenty million dollars, and that went into two bond ordinances that we had created, one for twelve million, one for twelve million. But now, we're going to have to finance those and pay them off in debt service. So going forward, you know, you're paying off over twenty, twenty-four million in repairs, which is just an increase in our current debt service. In addition to that, we're going to have joint meeting capital assessments of the twenty million dollars over the next eight years. We're the largest, largest customer of the joint meeting, and we pay about thirty-five percent of the bills, it's an agreement that goes back a hundred years, and they've come up with capital assessments that they require to meet federal regulations, and just the amount of usage, et cetera, and our piece is going to do about twenty million, that's another bond that we're going to have to be funding. So all of these things are adding up, we're running out of surplus. There's no headway as far as the settlement's concerned, and I'm really pushing for a sewer rate increase on November twelfth, over fifteen percent, just to carry us over hopefully until maybe some type of a settlement down the road or a judgment from the courts. Otherwise, we're going to be in dire straits come next 2015 budget year.
So how so?
Also, just let me continue on the bond rating, if you go into a deficit, what happens there is that on our annual debt statement, okay, if you incur a deficit, let's say of six million dollars, which is a structural deficit that we have right now, only covered by the sewer surplus, that's accounted for on the annual debt statement times twenty. So you multiply six million times twenty, it's a hundred twenty million that would show up on your, that would not be a deduction on your annual debt statement and effectively be included in your net debt. They have a huge impact as far as the state's concerned, and also on our bond ratings with the movies, just to have something like that happen, a deficits, something you just don't want and try to avoid all these past years. And, you know, what I choose over the past years has been a small increase, ten percent increases maybe every two or three years, that type of thing, rather than having a huge spike that would, that would happen this coming June if no other revenue sources were, you know, were achieved. We'd be looking at a forty percent revenue spike just to get us through to 2015, and again, there'd be a timing difference because we wouldn't have any cash for a few months, and that's not good, bigger bills.
Per household, what are you talking about?
Per household, I think it's about a hundred dollars a quarter now.
Hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars a quarter, a quarter. So fifteen percent increase, it'd be up to a hundred and fifteen dollars a quarter.
A hundred dollars, what do you mean?
Four sixty.
Hundred dollars, a hundred and fifteen a quarter.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just the nature of what's happening. Our infrastructure's a hundred years old, we're not getting any help from the federal government. We do have, get some low-interest loans from the New Jersey EIT, but again, we have to, you know, we have to pay the principal. We pay less than half going through the New Jersey EIT rather than going through the regular market, bond market, but we still have to pay the principal. Sometimes we get forgiven interest, that type of thing, but there's a lot of infrastructure damage and repairs happening, and again, you know, council can choose to have the increase now, a small increase or a huge spike in next year sometime. And again, we just can't depend on this, on the industrial customers coming through because if we have to go to court, we don't know when, and if a judgment's going to happen and how.
So right now, you'd like to go into cleaning more than any?
Well, we're still going through mediation and settlement discussions, we haven't stopped those, but I don't want to get into the detail, but nothing's, nothing's happened. They, their position hasn't really changed. And it's all at the detriment of the residential customers. They're picking up the frage.
I just, you know, we keep talking about the sewer, and Tony, I keep raising this issue, and I went through all the documentation that you had provided me. I go back to the agreement that we set back in ninety-six, ninety-seven, back, was it when we did the sewer...
Yeah, ninety, ninety.
So, okay. That agreement at the time, and I forget who struck the agreement or how it was prepared or what attorney negotiated it, but it just, going forward fifteen years and looking back, it was not a great deal. Because the agreement says that any repairs under ten thousand dollars would be the responsibility of American Water, all right?
Yes.
I went through all of those things you provided. There's not one in there that's under ten thousand dollars.
There hasn't been any for years, okay?
So what basically happened was, that number that was maybe reasonable in ninety-eight has never been increased. So here we are fifteen years later, and ten grand buys you a pair of shoes. I mean, you're not preparing anything for under ten grand. So they basically sold us a bag of beans.
Yep.
Okay? And I'd like to know, maybe George could look at this, is there an expiration on that agreement with American Water? Can we renegotiate that item?
It's forty years.
Forty years.
Forty years, good.
Wow!
Okay? So, I mean, the reality is, they're collecting our dollars, our city dollars, our customers' dollars, our residents' dollars. They've had built-in increases of one percent all along, and we're also paying the repairs. So we've gotten nothing from them, and that's really a concern to me.
Let me just recognize, Councilor Sedan.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I'd like to know if our law department can go back and maybe go to court if we have, okay? And open up that discussion, because they're getting the meat, the topping, this icing...
Dessert.
Okay? And all we've gotten is, upfront, we got a nice piece of change, which helped us at the time.
At the time.
But we're now getting killed. And if we're spending twenty-some million dollars on sewer repair, and they're not contributing one dime to it, all right? The other thing that I noticed in those documents you provided, I don't see where we got the little bit, we got to start doing little bits. We're basically allowing the American Water to do the repairs with their contractors, and we have no saving, even though we're paying for it.
Again, it's part of the contract, that you have to renegotiate.
It just makes no sense.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
And they don't do any bits at all, it's just whoever...
They got three guys on staff, three companies that they use, and they just rotate.
Yep.
And whatever it is, it is. And guess what? It's never under ten thousand dollars.
Damn.
It's a problem. And that's why we're in the pickle, we're in for the last five to ten years.
Councilor, Councilor Keenan, then Councilor, who raised the hand?
I was before.
Okay, oh, I didn't see you.
I was up to him.
Mr. Massey, I didn't see you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Question, go back to the quarter charges. Tony, why the quarterly charges? I mean, many years ago, we used to go on the yearly calendar, then all of a sudden, we go six months. Now all of a sudden, we went to, let's say, no quarterly because of, you know, extended November, by November, whatever date, twelve, we have to eventually, you know, bordering on the increase or whatever. Why do we, why are we doing this? It's because we are lacking the information, we are lacking of funding, or you're waiting to, you know, let's say, with the sewer and with the water, with the case to develop or to finalize. Why are we working on a quarterly basis?
We're not quarterly basis.
Quarterly, you know, your budget that we're working right now, like I said, it used to be on a yearly basis, then we went to six months, and now we're going on a quarterly basis. We just bought it, and we did give it a taxpayer increase not too long ago, right? For the bill that we got until February. If February comes up, presumably, it's going to be another increase, unless the city should be playing a lottery, then you can win a couple million dollars, we could up the model a bit, Tony. Or go to Meadowland, and we put them on a number seven, five, three horses, and we went a long shot. But we really, I don't see why, why all of a sudden, you know, we don't getting all the facts at one particular time, and if we do, it's like the Councilor mentioned, nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven was, it became a sweetheart deal, we give the water away, the sewer away, and now we get stuck with all the bills. It was, might as well, we should have hired additional fifty employee in the city that knows how to operate the machine, and we could have probably done our job ourselves, if that would ever been the case. I don't know how can you solve this problem, but why do we arriving on a quarterly basis?
I still don't understand the question. Is it quarterly basis?
No, I'm surprised. Not a quarterly basis. Half a year, you're on a budget, half a year budget right now, right? You don't understand it either, Tony?
No, no, no.
We cancel my question. The, our control doesn't understand. I don't think, he doesn't want to understand.
No, maybe you can explain it to me.
Well, I'll try, I'll try to you.
City council, we vote on quarterly appropriation, whereas in the past, we never did that.
We never did that. Why? Does it benefit you or the city administration to...
We say quarterly appropriation.
Not to be true to the people?
We divided the budget by four, and we voted on a quarterly, what we're going to charge the customer, the property owners a quarter of it.
Are you talking about the regular tax bills or the sewer?
Yes, the regular tax bills. They're all combined, we vote on a quarterly basis. Sewer, regular...
Now, let me go back over the budget process. We have to send out the bills for August and November, okay? We estimate, I estimate, what the budget's going to be for the year in the June, before we have the budget introduced.
So we appropriated, we appropriated, what are you saying, is we...
No, no, no.
Yes, we did.
No, we did. We appropriated for half a year August and November, but it was based on a yearly estimate of what I thought the budget was going to be for the entire year. And what you do, you have to go back and try and spread out those quarterly increases to avoid a spike. So in other words, this year, we had a seven percent increase, we had a seventy-five dollar increase per quarter for August and November, then we have another seventy-five dollar increase in February and May. So would you say, you go along on July first with the temporary budget until the budget's introduced and adopted, and you keep going with temporary emergency appropriations until it's adopted, and it's going to be November twelfth. November twelfth, you're going to have, know what the budget is for the entire year and what the actual budget's going to be for the year, and what the tax laws are going to be for February and May. So it's not really budgeting quarter to quarter. I estimate, again, in July, June, what the budget's going to be for the entire year, and we try and set up the budget, I'm sorry, the tax bills, so to avoid any one spike. In other words, I could have, we could have low taxes for August and November, and then we present this budget for a hundred thirty-five million, and we'll have a spike of a hundred, two hundred dollars a quarter. So we're trying to avoid that, we're trying to have spike increases.
That's the answer.
You know?
Thank you.
So there is a reason. Thank you. You understood my question, then?
Councilor Keenan?
Two points on the water situation. One is, we should never allow the city to be held hostage by our commercial customers. How do we allow this? Have we allowed it to happen in the past? And what can we do now to prevent it? I'm assuming that a resident doesn't pay their water bill, their water will be cut off. Does that happen to some of these commercial customers?
Well, again, I don't want to go into too much of the detail, but we've been in this lawsuit for about three years, and we're at the point now where we'll be filing motions, motions to collect those taxes, to be followed by other motions, which would include...
Let's talk about going forward. What can we collectively do as a city council to make sure that this doesn't happen on an ongoing basis? That's one point. The other point is, with regard to liberty of water, given the dire nature of our budgetary situation, and the obvious imbalance in a contract that favors them, perhaps they would voluntarily have discussions about reopening the contract, make the terms a little bit more favorable. It certainly can't hurt to ask. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Little point, Joe.
Can we, I think the bottom line here, with the sewer utility budget discussion, you want us to find out, we're going to put this back on the agenda, right, that, Tony?
Yeah, we're going to put it back on agenda for November twelfth, and we're going to have a fifty percent increase requested, and we're going to look into a new rate design that would pick up more customers to generate more revenue.
That's if we agree to put this back on, that's what he asked.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilor.
On that issue, we have a month and a half away.
Right, right.
I can assure you from me personally, that unless we resolve this issue with putting the burden on American Water to pay for some of these things, or give us as a city the right to...
Renegotiate.
No, renegotiate or bid out these contracts. Repairs, every time there's a repair, I cannot support a rate increase. Because what we're doing is, we're rate increasing the rate so that American Water could spend the money and not give us any saving.
Right. Now, I could concur with you, what you just...
That's my personal opinion.
I agree with you, I'm kind of going along with you, because I had the feeling that we had to find a way to try to resolve some of that, what they're doing to us, because they're just really just zapping it to us. And that might be a way, renegotiate contracts, that's one. Or we have a way to be involved with the contractors that they have out there doing the work for us. Because like Councilor Grover said, we had this discussion before, every time they do, they does a repair out there, it's more than ten thousand dollars. And that's ridiculous. So you want to make sure you got, George, you make a note of that? Because we have to make sure...
We're supposed to have a committee, it never got created.
Yeah, and we need to put that down.
I'm saying it.
And I'm going to also go on with Councilor Grover, because, you know, I'm not that... I'm going to also go on with Councilman Grover, because, you know, I'm not that, I'm not here to sit here and tell you, I'm not going to be honest with you. I'm not here to say I want to pass this on to any of our constituents out there, because we've got so many senior citizens out there on fixed income, and everywhere I go, people talk about that they are on fixed income, they can't afford this, can't afford that, and the economy is struggling, trying to come back up. But the more and more that we do things like this, it's going to just deflate it, and we need to stop that. Councilman Sedan?
I just want to just say I completely agree with Councilman Grover, but I want to see if there's any way we could get a representative from the water company to come to one of our city council meetings, so at least they could hear our concerns, and just express to them what's on their mind. So they could see pretty much, I guess, like the tension that's current, they probably felt it with the meetings you've had, but it would be nice to have a representative come to one of our meetings.
We certainly asked.
Okay.
Can't forcibly, we certainly...
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of that agreement to all the members of city council? A lot of guys that are here didn't have the attorney...
Tony, can you, George, somebody, can you guys, if you can get a copy of that, so we can share that with... I think maybe more or less, the, I'll get back to you, Councilman. The only two people may have been here with Councilman...
You and Brad Burkin.
Oh, you weren't here?
We're the only two.
As I said, you and, that's what you said, you and, you and Councilman Lodge, at that time, also, matter of fact, you know, over here, you know, over here, was Jack, but you know, over here, but those are the only two. So you guys can share that with us?
Yeah, sure, but again, go ahead. I just want to be clear, that the longer we wait for a sewer rate increase, the higher that rate increase is going to be, and it jeopardizes the city's position going into 2015 about paying more bills, and affecting our bond rating, etc.
I got one last question. I know Councilman Sedan has a, you mentioned the fact we got five-and-a-half million surplus that, five-and-a-half billion dollar surplus. That five-and-a-half million surplus, how much is that equated each quarter, each month? How much will we have by the end of this year of that five million?
Not going to have any.
Going to have anything. So it's that five-and-a-half million that we have?
What we have right now is a budget that has revenues, I'll ballpark some numbers, of seventeen million revenue collected, and we have expenses of, I think it's twenty-two or five. That's a structural deficit, and it's only made up by this surplus. And we're not going to have any surplus at the end of next year.
I mean, it's in this year, I'm talking about in this year.
Yeah, at the end of this year. At the end of this year, we're not going to have any surplus to carry forward the fiscal 2015. We're going to have zero, if not a deficit at year-end. So what I'm saying is, if you wait until like July first next year, we're going to have a deficit, we will not get our budgets approved by the state, it's going to affect our bond rating, and we're not going to have any cash to pay our bills. We only have seven million dollars in cash now, and we used five-and-a-half million for surplus. And we've got all these expenses coming up.
I want to kind of wrap this up, Councilman Sedan.
Real quick, when does the forty years back?
Twenty thirty-eight, I guess.
Yeah, oh, yeah, forty years.
Mr. President, just to follow up on what you said, Tony. Tony, just follow up on what you said. Again, it's, we can't continue to do what we're doing. We can't allow them to continue to spend our money, and we have no say in it. I understand that the requirements, and if we need to pass an increase for this one time, I insist, but we then have to change.
I agree.
We can't allow the water company into 2014 to do whatever they want with our money, and we do nothing about it. Because we're going to be talking about this again.
Next year. Exactly. And a year after.
And a year after, because they're going to continue to spend the money, they don't care.
They don't care.
That's the problem.
Well, I'm sure...
That's my problem.
I'm sure our law department will look into this matter, and see if we can come up with some kind of resolution or negotiations with Liberty Water. But in the meantime, I think you have to separate sewer rate increase from some of the...
We can't separate it.
Well...
They got to change, we got to change.
Again, again, if nothing happens...
This is not Congress.
If nothing happens, you know, just be alert to the fact...
The law department's got a month to work on it.
Well, that's not going to happen in a month.
Okay, got the budget on the law department. Say some money, if they don't want to work, got the budget.
Now, the consensus that we need to put this on and leave it off.
We got time to decide that.
Okay.
And we got a month to leave it off.
And remember, even if it's passed on November twelfth and adopted, the rates won't go into effect until January first, which gives you another couple of months to...
Right now, Tony, the consensus is leave it off.
Well, that's, I've alerted councilors to the pitfalls of not having a sewer rate increase. And again, it's dire going into 2015. Hopefully, we might get some settlement before that, but you're still going to need a sewer rate increase.
I'm still praying that we get a settlement. Okay, can we go with that? We have a motion? A motion by Councilwoman, motion, me, John.